Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 21st. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we begin, I move to seal the minutes from executive session.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon to seal the minutes from executive session. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Moving right along on the docket here. Next item, please.
Approval of consent calendar for the vote.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I'd just like to note the efforts of the clerk in getting us current with these years' worth of council journals. I know that that was an undertaking, so thank you very much, and I move to approve.
Okay. Second, so we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses not requiring public hearing for vote. Application for a Hawker license, 90-day Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC. The location, there's two different locations. The first one is 1235 Wompanoag Trail, 02915, a 30-by-45 frame tent. The second location is 40 Highland Avenue, 02914. That's also a 30-by-45 frame tent.
Okay, well, appears that the applicant is here. Mr. City Solicitor, would you like to swear her in?
Just really tell the truth, the whole truth, if anything, the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Melissa Corset.
Okay. And what is your relation to?
That's my husband, Michael.
Okay.
And I'm also the manager for Keystone Novelties.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, do we have all the paperwork in place at this point in time?
All the paperwork's in place.
Okay, any questions from the council?
What is being sold?
Novelty items, sparklers, and like firework items.
And how long you intend on being there for?
That tent should be 14 days or less, so it won't be past July 12th.
I was just curious more than anything else. Okay. No questions from the council, or no other further questions at this point in time?
Any issues with the fire or police department?
No, nothing's been reported. Nope, no problem at all.
They usually come out once we're ready to open before we can actually open.
So...
Well, only question, I don't know who the question would be directed to, are these items that are also sold in regular businesses that are full-time in business, brick-and-mortar?
We're not brick-and-mortar. We're solely a tent company, and that's why we only do seasonal. I'm sure you could get these items at a brick-and-mortar, but not from the owner of the tent companies.
Right. I'm wondering if anyone on the council or has heard from businesses, you know, regarding, you know, a conflict that they might see.
We've never had complaints as far as business-wise, as far as I know, or from, you know, civilians and customers in the streets. We sell everything as Rhode Island legal. The fire marshals come and stop and check the tent throughout the season, so we've never had an issue, as far as I'm aware of, and I've been managing for seven years in Rhode Island, so...
And I can say also, Councilman, in the four years that I've sat on this council, that I've yet to hear of anything. It doesn't necessarily mean that nothing did happen, but I have yet to hear anything bad from any one of these hawkers. Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve license.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the license.
President.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Did we group these?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Most likely for A and B.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item, please.
Communications, Mayor Communications, appointment of Deputy Chief, the Honorable Mayor Roberto De Silva.
Mayor, you changed since the last time I saw you.
So, the City of East Providence has named Christopher Francis Coney as the Deputy Chief of the East Providence Police Department after a recommendation by a panel of law enforcement officials and interviewing multiple candidates. The mayor has appointed him to lead the department under Chief Nevis. The deputy chief served as a captain since 2016, both in the Services and Patrol Division, and has been a member of the EPPD since 2000, when he first joined the force as a patrol While rising through the ranks from Officer Deputy Chief, he spent 15 years as a member of the Special Reaction Team, became an FBI-certified firearms instructor, and for some time stepped up into the role of supervisor of the Field Training and Evaluation Program. Francis Coney earned his Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice from St. Anslum College. He is currently enrolled in the Administration of Justice Program at Salve Regina and anticipates earning his master's degree in the fall. And I think I can speak for the mayor on this one and say that there is no one better for the job. And I have one more thing.
Before that one thing, can we just say congratulations?
But the other thing is, the mayor also wanted me to let the public know that on June 5th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Riverside Library, there is a neighborhood meeting to generate feedback on three proposals for the Platte Waters site. That's the Hopin and Burnside Avenue. And that's up on Facebook, too. So if anyone has any questions, they can message it on Facebook, or they can call the office.
Thank you, Mr. Fattaro. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. We have one person today, and his name is Ken Goucher. He would like to speak about the food truck on Warren Avenue.
Hi, I'm Ken Goucher from 291 Brown Street. I don't want to put the food truck out of business. I would just like to know if we could move it down. When he parks his truck in front of Valley towing on the corner of Fenmore and Warren Avenue, all the cars repaired are parked in front of it. Now, all of us that live in the Brown Street area, we only have to pull out into the middle of Warren Avenue to see past that truck. Also, he puts like vehicles with tinted windshield. Sometimes I can see through the path and I'm coming. I'm just, like I said, if he can move the truck or put it, if he can move the truck or put it on his own property, it used to be a gas station, that's fine. I don't want to put the man out of business. I just like a little bit of space so we can see. That's all, no problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I mean, the quest makes sense. What's the follow-up on this? Who's going to, could we have maybe the city clerk contact the police chief and see if they can take care of that issue, or clerk directly contact the vendor? I just don't want to see it fall and, you know, not get followed up on.
I can definitely reach out to him.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And that concludes public comment.
That concludes public comment. Absolutely correct. We only have one person here. I'm just going to ask, at the pleasure of the council, we do have an employee here this evening for the final passage of public hearing on ordinance and amendment of Chapter 19 of Revised Ordinance of the City of East Providence of Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title zoning. And this is for a vote. And at the pleasure of the council, you mind that we just move this up so Ms. Feather can come up and speak on behalf of this, and we can get her out as early as possible as well? Does anyone have any objections to that?
Motion required to do that, or no?
It's just unanimous consent. I'm fine with it.
Fine, okay.
I just want to point out to the council, because this is a zoning ordinance, it's covered by state law, so this is an exception to the rule that we have to have two ordinance passages. State law controls how you approve zoning changes, so state law only says one passage is required. So this will be a public hearing, and after that passage, or not passage, depending what you decide to do.
So, I just read the final passage hearing. Ms. Feather, would you like to speak up and speak on behalf of this ordinance, please?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for taking this out of order. It's greatly appreciated, especially after being out at the Henderson Bridge meeting last evening that Council President Britto also attended. The action before the council this evening, as Solicitor Marcel just indicated, is to hold a public hearing to consider a small number of amendments to zoning, and they are all related to the waterfront districts as contained in Article 9 of Chapter 19 zoning. I would ask that prior to any vote that you might take this evening, that the planning staff recommendation to the planning board dated March 7, 2019, with all of its attachments, be entered into the record of the hearing. And I would also say that, before I get into any specifics, that the planning board meeting to consider this actually had to be held in April. The planning board did give an advisory opinion to the council to approve the amendments as proposed and as described in the planning department recommendation to the board. And then, following that, I just wanted to point out that the dates are a little bit lengthier in between than we normally do. So we had a March staff recommendation, but we were unable to hold the planning board meeting. We held it in April. The planning board did give the advisory recommendation. And then we had three weeks of advertising that led up to tonight's public hearing in the post. And the third and final of those was in last Thursday's, I believe, the 16th. And that allows the hearing legally to take place tonight before the city council. The waterfront zoning, I think anyone that's been around for a while will remember that it's actually been in place since March 2004, so it's been operating with the commission, with both the text and all of the waterfront districts and all of the rezoned parcels in the waterfront since March 2004. The proposed amendments reflect some little tweaks to that section of the article that, when we looked at it again 15 years later, and as we applied the article to specific projects that came before us, and just looked at changes in the market, changes in technology, so forth, we looked at the article, and we looked for opportunities to make it easier for people to get through the process. So the proposed amendments do reflect many new uses since 2004. They reflect the deletion of out-of-date uses, and they reflect the conversion of 25 conditional uses to be permitted as of right. The waterfront Article 9 has its own use schedule, which is separate from the rest of the city and the other use schedule that's in Section 1998. So if you go to that use schedule, we looked at 25 conditional uses and looked at what the uses were and where we saw them out in the community. In particular, we took a tour of Phillipsdale, and we saw a number of art and fabrication-type uses that were listed in the use schedule as needing a conditional use permit, which would mean that the applicant would have to take the additional time to appear before the hearing panel of the waterfront commission. So, in order to expedite the permitting and seeing that there was really no public nuisance involved with these uses, no noise, no smell, truck traffic, or things like that, they were perfectly acceptable uses and could coexist with the uses around them. So we're proposing that those be permitted as of right. Some of the language clarifies the procedure a little bit. As we administered this article over the past 15 years, some of the language was not quite right, and we clarified that to reflect the current procedure that is properly taking place. It does reflect the change in the form of government to a mayor. It reduces the number of commissioners. It proposes to create a dedicated fund to receive payment of INLU fees, and any requests by applicants for INLU is to be done once only and at the time of the application. The planning board and the city council both have defined that the amendments meet the general purposes of zoning and are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And again, at the April meeting, the planning board used the March 7, 2019 Planning Department recommendation to the board, which details all of the general purposes and in great deal detail explains how the amendments meet the general purposes, and also goes into detail on how the amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and actually for the implementation of the comprehensive plan. The amendments are attached to the March 7, 2019 recommendation from the planning department to the planning board. The legend is on the front page. Deletions are indicated by a strike-through. New text is underlined. Text to be removed is indicated with a double-strike-through. And the remainder of the text, which you'll see is really, most of what you see here is text that is not marked at all, is text to remain as-is. So the amendments are really scattered throughout the article, and I think that the, probably that the biggest collection of amendments is to the use schedule. We added new uses, and again, we are proposing to change conditional uses to permitted as of right. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the amendments as they are attached. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the planning department recommendation to the board, which I hope is before you. The waterfront commission also looked at these amendments, and they voted 7-0, that they were in favor of them, and they passed that recommendation along to the planning board. But the planning board is the board that, by charter, advises the council. And again, they did by majority vote to ask that you approve the proposed amendments.
At the pleasure of the council, anyone have any discussion? I mean, I'm fine personally with it, but please, so from the floor, for discussion.
If I may, I have two questions, Ms. Feather, and I did read the article, and I thank you for the overview, and I found that the changes are basically modest, you know, as you've indicated. I did have a couple of questions. One was, it's under 19473, and it's 1B, and it's the paragraph that basically addresses the planning board's involvement in reviewing applications. And per my read, under the existing ordinance, the pre-amendment ordinance, the planning board will act as an additional review agency on applications, whereas in the amendment, that provision appears to be struck, and it looks like the involvement, you all right, Mike? Okay. The involvement of the planning board is actually reduced with regard to application review. I just was wondering if, you know, is there rationale for that, or what is the purpose of that amendment?
Thank you, Councilman Cahoon. That's a very good question, and it actually is only relatable to this section, and I'm trying to find why it was placed here. But it does not remove the planning board from the equation. The planning board still, on the applications, looks at the applications for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. We just had one on the PKL Investments conversion of the former hot rides to 22 apartment units in 30 Betts Parkway. So we are continuing to do it. I'm not sure why it's in that location right now, but I think elsewhere.
It was moved, I think.
Yeah, I think it was moved elsewhere.
Okay.
And I may have missed it. And I ask because, you know, when we went through the procedure with, you know, the Dollar General project, for example, I was very pleased to see the feedback that came back from the planning board with respect to, you know, consistency with the comprehensive plan. You know, there was some thought about making sure that the new building design would be consistent with the architecture across the street at Kent Heights School.
Right.
You know, that's certainly something I would like to see continue going forward, and understanding that, you know, that, you know, the waterfront district has a lot of autonomy, if you will, with regard to the projects that are administered within that district. I think this is something that the city, you know, can maintain control of, right, with regard to making sure what goes in there fits in with the larger part of the city.
Yes.
So I just wouldn't want to see that go away with any amendment I voted for.
No, we wouldn't either. And I should say that I personally, along with the mayor and a number of other city staff, I am an ex-officio member of the waterfront commission, so I do attend every meeting, and I am a voting member of the Design Review Committee. So I do get into the nitty-gritty of those details when an application has to go to the Design Review Committee, and I have gone through one of those the summer of 2017. We had one. So we do get into that.
I have one more question if you, and I think it's simpler. Down toward the end, and as you mentioned, this amendment would establish dedicated affordable housing fund, if you will, within the waterfront districts' funds. If I understand the amendment correctly, funds being allocated to that affordable housing fund would only be available for affordable housing-type projects, all right, or efforts to develop affordable housing? Did I read that correctly?
Right. The goal there was to create a segregated, dedicated fund to receive the payment of the INLU fees rather than, you know, mix them with any other revenue stream. And you can see, we've titled it as well. Pam is standing right here, but the answer to that question is yes, but Pamela Sherrill, the executive director of the, well, you're the waterfront planner, the waterfront commission and the waterfront planner, may want to talk to you further on that.
Okay. My apologies. My 10-month-old grandson is just up from Virginia, and I was dealing with a lot of other things, so I tried to get cleaned up as soon as I could. The Affordable Housing Fund is a dedicated fund, and it's strictly for the creation of new units. And that creation can happen through new construction or through renovation of existing units, and then deeding them for 30 years as affordable.
Okay. And that's only residential units, right, or?
Right. Right, right.
I mean, I realize, maybe that's a stupid question. I just want to make sure.
No, it is. It's 10% of the residential units is the requirement.
Thank you.
Right. And Diane just reminded me that at Top Watten, there are six affordable units there as well. So this, and there's, I think it's six at Ross Commons.
Well, thank you. Any other further questions from the council? If not, this is for a vote this evening.
Public hearing.
And public hearing as well.
Before we just move on, can we just entertain a motion to accept the planning board's recommendations on a dated memorandum of March 7, 2019 into the record?
Okay.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon.
Seconding.
Not the city solicitor. Seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. No further questions at this point in time. I'd like to open up the floor for any public comment. If so, please step up to the podium. I'm going to ask this question two times. If not, I'm going to close the floor for public comment. Anyone interested in speaking in favor of or against, please step up to the podium. With that being said, public comment is closed at this point in time. We may proceed. If no council members have any questions, we may proceed with a vote.
Mr. President, I think this is a continuation of the progress that we're seeing with waterfront and connected programs. I would move approval.
Most certainly is. So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Rodrick.
Can you read the title of the ordinance?
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please.
The title of the ordinance, it's an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 19 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title zoning.
And this is final passage, if I'm not...
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodrick for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call vote, please.
Marado.
Marado, excuse me.
Councilman Cahoon.
Sounds like you. Yeah. That's sad.
Okay. Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you.
Could I just say thank you very much, and I wanted to assure you with Pam Sherrill here, that if you recall the last city council meeting we were at, William Fazio Le gave an update on the activities of the waterfront commission, and we worked very closely together in many meetings together, and Pam and I just put our heads together, and of course, we will continue to come to the city council to give you status updates on the waterfront activities.
And we thank you for that work and hard work. More importantly, I had the opportunity on a number of projects of working with you as well in the northern part of the city, one in such as the Fram Building. And, you know, the work that you're doing, the information that you provide to the public, you get it right out there. So, no, your work is going, we're very appreciative of the work that you all do upstairs.
We appreciate the passage. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for taking us in advance as well. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, as opposed to proceeding where we... Madam Clerk, as opposed to proceeding where we left off, I'm going to ask one more favor from the council, that we do have Chief Nibis here. There is a resolution for the police department. At the pleasure, again, of the council, if no one opposes, I'd like to move this resolution up. If anybody has any concerns, please let me know. And I'll read this real quick. It's a resolution ratifying the memorandum of understanding dated November 14 between the city and the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 569. And essentially, this resolution is, it's to have, at this point in time, and maintain that the city, East Providence Police Department, maintains four captains. They've always had four captains. By the way, this isn't changing. This isn't anything new. We are just ratifying it by the council. So it was approved administratively in the past. However, it needs to be ratified for the council to solidify that. And with that being said, we're just going through a formality here of ratifying this resolution. And Mr. Nibis, or Chief Nibis, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium and just briefly explain, I mean, again, this was already assigned into place through the union and the city. It was approved administratively by both parties. However, it just wasn't ratified by the council.
That's correct. So just to avoid any loopholes, we've been using this fourth captain for a number of months now, over a year. It's going to be used for this accreditation process that Councilman Morado brought to our attention a few meetings ago. We need a dedicated supervisor in charge of accreditation. We had a lieutenant that was in charge of it, and sometimes you get some, a little more resistance when you're asking a peer-to-peer to get projects complete on time. Having a captain oversee this and having a higher-ranking official will ensure that these duties are done. And as you know, and as you pointed out last week, this is a very important issue for accreditation.
Very good.
I want to thank you for that, for, you know, making that a priority.
That's a priority.
As a council, we look at budget, and we're just tired of these lawsuits. And that will help the department and the city from some of those lawsuits.
Drastically. Yeah, appreciate it.
So very quick and briefly, I'll just read over the resolution. Again, resolution ratifying the memorandum of understanding dated November 14, 2018, between the city and the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 569, whereas the prior administration negotiated a memorandum of understanding which allows for an additional one captain to the East Providence Police Department. And whereas the agreement was signed by the city manager and the president of the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 569 on or about November 14, 2018. And whereas the law department has determined that the memorandum of understanding was never ratified to a previous ratified collective bargaining agreement. Now therefore, it is resolved in order to effectuate the intent of the parties to the memorandum of understanding, the City of East Providence, the city council of the City of East Providence hereby accepts, ratifies, and approves of the attached memorandum of understanding effective immediately. Does anybody have any questions on the council at this point in time? I'd just like to open it up for any discussion. And if not, would someone like to make a motion, or someone would be interested in making a motion in favor of this resolution?
Mr. President, move to approve the resolution.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon to move forward with the resolution. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, while the chief is there, could I just say a word? Chief, I want to congratulate you and commend you in the department on a wonderful memorial service the other day for foreign officers. You did a great job, and it was a good day for East Providence law enforcement. And I just want to publicly say thank you and congratulations on a nice ceremony.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words, and we love having you there, and wish you the rest of you who made it.
And one other word also. I don't think we, as a council, publicly had the opportunity congratulating you on your new position. So Chief Nibis, for those who don't know, this is our new chief, chief of the East Providence Police Department.
Hold your applause.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Well-deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now may we proceed to the regular format.
Councilmember Communications, City Council, Mayor Charter Provisions and Legal Interpretation, Councilman Cahoon.
Mr. President, I think we addressed this, at least to my satisfaction, in the last meeting. I think we're good to go with this, from my perspective, anyway.
Would you like to open up the floor for discussion on this?
Happy to entertain any discussion, but I have none.
Okay. Is anyone on the council at this point in time, like?
I got my own document. It's going to be about the same thing, so.
Okay. So want to just follow through with, okay. So next item, then, please.
Next item is Department Heads' Aid to Inquiry for Council Legislation Charter Inquiry, Councilman Morado.
So I don't want to keep beating this dead horse, but I feel this is, again, an important issue. And I just have to say, with the department heads that were here tonight, from zoning and planning, and the chief, it's such a great relief to hear from them, as I have stated many times before, our experts in the field that, you know, they work in, to come up here and tell us that this plan is a good plan, or this plan is not a good plan. To me, it's very comforting to know that. And with that, I have a sewer abatement discussion coming up. And again, it's going to be kind of piecemeal together when we get there for that reason of not having that department head here today. So I looked at this issue and did a lot of homework and looked at it from a police, you know, what I know how to do in an investigation, basically. And I've come to a conclusion, and I want to ask the solicitor if he can look into a couple of things. So when I looked at the charter in that section, 2-9, and I also went back, and I went to the Charter Commission minutes, and the intent of me doing that was to find out what was the intent of that discussion for 2-9. Unfortunately, I found the docket for every single meeting, I just couldn't find the minutes. So I looked into the previous charter and compared the two. In that section, there isn't a whole lot of change. The language is pretty much the same, except for the first paragraph. And they also added the subpoena powers, which gives the council a little bit more power. So with that said, I also thought about, what if we were to reconvene the Charter Commission? And to me, it sounded like a good idea for us. However, to do that, to have one, to, you know, to discuss one issue, I think was kind of pointless. But it's still an option. So when you look at the charter, you have all of these, you have some of these, I'm going to use a zoning as an example. The zoning is listed in the charter along with three other commissions. And I understand some of those are governed by state statute. However, we have plenty of other commissions, and they are not listed in the charter. In fact, the zoning is listed in the charter, but it's also governed by a whole bunch of other city ordinances that are not listed in the charter. So the reason why I'm bringing that up and making a comparison, I believe the charter is silent on the argument that I've been presenting for the past couple of meetings. With that said, I would like to ask our solicitor if he could possibly look into, could this be resolved with an ordinance change? That's my first question. I think that's my first important question. Would this be, could this be resolved? Could language be added? Not to the charter, but could this department head issue be resolved with an ordinance?
You want my answer now?
Yes. If you have the answer now. If not, we can, you know.
So an ordinance could never conflict with the charter. The charter is above the ordinance. So if an ordinance conflicts with the charter, the ordinance would be invalid. So in general, my question, my answer to you would be, it probably cannot be fixed by an ordinance.
So then my next question would be, and I was hoping that the answer would be different, but I'm going to --
I mean, again, this is just, I'm not used to giving legal opinions on a fly like this, but that's generally the principle. And so since we've already given an opinion that the charter doesn't allow for what we have suggested, or what you suggested that it does, that it would be a little inconsistent for me to now say, well, you can fix it with an ordinance. So just trying to be consistent in my legal theories.
Okay. So with that said, I was hoping it would be a little different. But with that said, it's my honest opinion that we have three and a half years of trying to do our jobs here. And it's going to be a long three and a half years. And whether it's this council or the next council, this needs to be fixed. And the reason why I bring up the language from the previous charter, it's a language that's been in that charter for many, many years, and we've never had an issue before. So I don't see why we should be denied that now moving forward with this new form of government. So my opinion would be to move, to try to have an amendment added in the charter. If that's a proper way to proceed, then that's a proper way to proceed. Whether that be, you know, reconvene the commission, if that's what the pleasure of the council, or just having the solicitor draft language, you know, and then we proceed forward in that, you know, manner. Either way, we're going to have to proceed forward, whether it be with a Charter Commission or just that language that we're seeking. Which, to me, that language is really a tool that we need to do what we need to do with our legislative duties. So just like to open that for discussion, guidance from the rest of the members.
Mr. President, question, Councilman. So if the Charter Commission were reconvened, as you describe, what would you see them doing? I mean, I don't see them having authority to just add an amendment, make it, doesn't that have to be done at an election? So are you asking that they would make recommendations for the next election?
So the, yes. So that's why, like, as I mentioned, my original thought was to reconvene the Charter Commission. But to do that for one topic, unless we're seeking to have other things changed and tweaked in the charter, which I don't think that's the, you know, the argument. The argument is just to have that portion fixed so we can proceed with doing our inherent duties legislatively. So I don't think we should, I don't think, my opinion that the Charter Commission should not be reconvened. I think we should proceed with language that would speak of what we've been talking about. And yes, we would need, we have one of two options, either putting it out for a vote on a special ballot, and you correct me if I'm wrong.
Speaking of, I don't have the, my, or -- Sorry, I don't have the charter in front of me, but I think there's a number of ways that you can amend the charter, and one is through the city council. To propose an amendment that's eventually ratified by the voters.
By the voters. Or we could wait two years for the next election, and that would be placed on the ballot, from my understanding. To me, two years is too long. That's half of our term. So.
But what the solicitor is saying, I think, bottom line is, no matter how we make a recommendation, it has to be approved by the electorate.
All charter amendments have to be approved by the electorate because they're the governing body that approves the charter.
So I don't think we would want to call a special election, right? At the cost of that, we would have to wait until the next election cycle.
That's up to the, I don't have the current charter.
It's a choice we would have, right?
I don't have the current charter in front of me, but I believe that you could do it either by special election, or you could do it, wait till the regular general election. There may be a provision in there that says that only charter amendments can be approved at a general election. I'm not sure. I just don't have it in front of me. But this, generally, there's two ways of doing, special election or a general election. Can I just see the, I know that's the old charter, but I don't think that changed. And I apologize. I usually bring it, but I didn't bring it tonight.
And that is actually my point. There are only two avenues here, a special election or wait till the next general election. There's no other avenue that the council has to just amend a charter.
The council can only propose amendments to the charter. They can't approve.
Right.
Correct. It would have to be for a vote, either way. So the question would be, would we, as a council, want to do a special election? Special ballot, I believe, that's a proper terminology?
Special election.
Or wait until 2020, when there's a general election?
So from my perspective, I think we've hit on a number of things here in the first couple of months that, you know, may or may not continue to plague us, you know. I think you look back to the history, the start of the history of the country, right? I mean, they wrestled with the very same things on a much bigger scale, but certainly the same kind of ideas, you know? Which authority, you know, was primary over another authority in a given instance, right? I mean, there's a lot of wrestling going back and forth to determine that. I think there's probably merit in the idea of taking on strategic charter amendments, if you will. I mean, I'll read to you from 2-9 to Powers of the Council. Establish administrative departments and distribute the work of the divisions. Now I'll read to you from Section 3.12, which is the powers of the mayor, which says, "The work of each department may be distributed among such divisions thereof as may be established at the direction of the mayor." That sounds like two different bodies doing the same thing. Now, I know that that's not the intent of the charter as a whole, but that sounds like a pretty big contradiction to me. And since we're bound to follow this foundational document, we probably should take, make the effort to get it right. So, you know, I think there's probably a few other instances in there, and I'm certainly not slighting the efforts of the Charter Commission. I know that was a huge undertaking, and I know that a lot of people put in a lot of work. But, you know, people are people, and documents are documents, and, you know, we can make sure that it's right on.
I agree. I mean, if we were to, you know, vote on reconvening the Charter Commission, then I agree that other things that were, that needed a little bit of tweaking, then that's when it should be done. To reconvene for just that one item, I think it would be kind of pointless. But if we were on that topic already, had other issues as that, the one that you pointed out, then it's something that they should also address, so.
So will we be redefining what's in the charter at this point in time? Because if this is the case, and we're going to start going back to the charter, are we going to start looking at everything? Or because, I mean, we might as well cover it all on the, like you said, on the one umbrella, as opposed to, you know, we're going to do it for this over here, and then, oh, and by the way, you know, next time around, we're going to do it for something over here, you know? I mean, if that's the case, and more importantly, do we need the Charter Commission to do this type of work? Or can the council do it?
As I said, my opinion --
I'm just wondering, like, from a, do we need to get all these bodies back together if this is the case, if this, if it's for one or just a couple of items here? Or, I mean, how do we proceed with this? I would ask for a legal advice, like, how would we proceed with this? If it's one item, I mean, do we need to get the entire Charter Commission back together? Establish a charter? And is it the same Charter Commission, more importantly?
So, Council President, I will provide you with an answer. I don't want to give an answer on the fly.
I'm not asking for an answer right now, because I don't want to put you on the spot because you're going to read off something, and then you're going to read into it further later on.
I'm just looking at Section 1311 of the charter. It says, "This charter may be amended at any time or a new charter adopted in the manner provided by the Constitution. Should two or more amendments adopted at the same elections have conflicting provisions, the one receiving the largest affirmative vote shall prevail. The sections of any amendments in addition to this charter shall be numbered by the city clerk and inserted in the appropriate places or added to the charter." So it really doesn't really say how a charter is amended, except provided by the Constitution. And by that, I think that must mean the Rhode Island Constitution, which is a whole other ball of wax on how you get a charter together, because you've got to gather signatures. It says, "This charter may be amended at any time or a new charter adopted." So, but tell me how this charter may be amended at any time. It doesn't tell me how. And I'm not sure how.
And that's my point. I think as opposed to put you on the spot right now at this point in time, that something's going to need some further, you know, further looking into and divulging into.
Could you also look into 13-16?
Yep. Yep. Press it up.
So I recall when the previous charter commission commenced, they were tasked with the law, and it was a big undertaking. It hadn't been opened or looked at in a couple of decades, a few decades. Their main focus was really changing over the wording for the mayor, the new form of government. But in that, there was a lot of work that after the charter commission commenced, they came back, you know, and spoke and said that they still had a list of things that they needed to fix, that they wanted to propose, but because it was so much, that they couldn't provide it all in one, one election, one sitting, and that they really felt strongly, a handful of them that were on the commission felt strongly about continuing the work so that they could really finish what they started because they felt, at the end of the day, it was certainly an injustice not to complete the work that they had started and just cherry pick some wording. Because as we went along, if you remember, Council President, we had to make some language changes kind of consistently at each meeting because of typos and errors, again, because it was kind of a hasted group that was put together. So I think, I'm in favor. I think it's a good idea to go back again because there's, we're going to find inconsistencies in certain sections of the charter that overlap with the new form of government. There probably is some good clarification that needs to be done. So I would not be opposed to bringing back or offering specifically those who were on it because obviously they have the backlog of what they were doing, they've invested work. Certainly if they were still wanting to be part of this commission, I would think that giving them the first option to do so would be good. And if they didn't, then clearly we could, there are other qualified bodies that would sure come forward to do so.
Okay. So Councilwoman, just again on the fly, 13.16, that has to do with the codification, formal codification of when you pass ordinances, they're just in a, in a, in a paper form, and then they've got to be inserted into this code by number and by specific provision, and that's all that, 13-16 refers only to that. Every two years that there has to be a codification of any ordinances that you guys pass. So that the ordinance books is, is up to date. It has nothing to do with the charter.
Is that something that we do by resolution or?
No, we just do it administratively.
Oh, just, okay.
So I guess the question would be, and I'm not going to keep beating this horse. I mean, at some point enough, I have to call on, right? So I guess the question to the rest of the council would be, one, the solicitor would have to do a little research on, you know, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine.
These are the questions that I.
I got them written down, thank you.
I want to ask fellow council members. Do we want to, would we be willing to look into having the charter reconvened to look at other issues or other things that they didn't have time to tweak or time to really look at? Or do we want to, if we're willing to, just have that change looked at? That's, I guess that's the question I will be, I'm putting out to the council.
As far as I'm concerned personally, I would say that if we're going to have the charter commission reconvened, I would suggest, and based off the councilwoman's statement that she made, that perhaps maybe look into the things that they couldn't finish off because of the time that maybe they can finish off. Then there comes a question of, you know, does, do we keep the old charter commission? Or do we start a new one because we have a, a new council here? I'm sure there are council members up here who probably would prefer to have their own people selected, or maybe not. Maybe you would like to go for what we had because it's already started, they've worked well together. That's another question that we'd have to ask ourselves, and perhaps, are they interested in reconvening as a group? You might get some, and you might get others who just say, I did my share, thank you, and they're going to move on. So I think there's a lot of elements, moving parts to this that we should look into before we go forward with this. Let's get all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, such as having the city solicitor look into this from a legal perspective and how we can go about doing this. And then, as a council, what are the other things that we want to look forward to changing if there's any change necessary on the charter? Or if there was something that was missed, maybe bring them back to have them discuss it, so.
So what would be the?
Mr. President, if I might, I think that the first step that I see is we as a council have to identify if we think there's a problem. And I think we all agree that there are some issues over the first few months that we've, we've wrestled with. But we are elected to represent the community, not a prior commission, or, and I have no problem with reconvening, but not until we identify some specifics. First of all, what would the charge be that we would give them? We don't just reconvene them and say, fix the charter. Fix what? Or, and I'm not, you're not saying that, you know, you've been very clear since, since you've been on Councilman Murato, but I think we first need to identify, all of us as council members can from time to time put items on the agenda and address, as you have, and I've talked about a few things and others have, what we see as a problem. Once we determine as a council that we're having some legislative problems with how we're doing our job as a council, then we, we go to the plan as how, how do we straighten it out? If we reconvene a, a charter commission, that's okay, but we have to give them a charge, just like they were given a charge before about changing the form of government. So I think we're on the right path, we just have to do it in some steps. We'll be waiting for a legal, a legal opinion and go from there. And finally, just to ask you, Councilmen, specifically, because I want to make sure that, you know, I, I agree with you when you say we want to be able to do our jobs, and we have three and a half more years or so. Seems like maybe 30. But now, there were three department heads here tonight, at least three, and have you been denied recently? Any requests specifically?
Yes.
About information or an appearance of a department head?
I've been denied, I've formally requested department heads, I have not received those department heads. The last one I, we did, that was allowed to, you know, answer questions was Malcolm, the finance director. Everything else has been done through email, was, which has been very convoluted and time consuming. And the questions, the, the questions get lost in translation, and then you have to re-ask the same question. And I don't even know where I'm at with these questions, as you'll see with the sewer abatement issue. I've been trying to work on a sewer abatement ordinance for a long time, and it shouldn't take that long, you know, to, to try to, try to resolve something, you know? And as I, I'll keep saying this, I'll say, I'll say, I said it before, and I'll keep saying it, they are the experts in their field, you know? The energy that I've spent on these, on the department head issue and the sewer abatement, it's, it's kind of ridiculous, okay? We have better things to do. And as we've mentioned before, we are not a council that we are going to bash department heads. I absolutely like the idea of sending questions ahead of time, okay? Because I feel that the, the department head that comes up here with those questions ahead of time, they're not going to get caught off guard. And in fact, they'll have a little time to do research and come back with more substance, maybe answer more questions, give us answers to questions that we may have, you know? And I'll, I'll use this example, two examples actually. When we did have the finance director speak on the budget format, if I had just met in the mayor's office, you know, finance is not in my wheelhouse, okay? I would, I would have never known that budgeting a 180-plus million dollar budget on the Excel spreadsheet was not the proper way to do it. I would have never known, known that. But Councilman Kahoon picked up on that because he's more in tune to financing. That's a proper way of vetting stuff, okay? We didn't bash the finance director, but we did get substance. We did get good answers and moving in the right direction with the, you know, budget formatting. When we talked about Bennys and we had the planning director, and I, we asked, I asked the planning director, you know, does that plan for Bennys fit what our community goals and objectives, or whichever way I worded it? And she confirmed that it did. That's, reconfirming, that's good. That's put our record that our department head agrees with that plan versus us just going, taking a word of the developer, okay? We shouldn't just take the word of a developer who, their sole purpose is to make money in our business, in our, in our city. I don't really think they, well, I can't say that they're not concerned, but their primary goal is to make money, not the neighbors behind or, you know, all the work that they did with the water runoff and even the zoning, drop-off and loading zone, so it doesn't interfere with the sidewalks and stuff. They are the experts. So, you know, and the other example is a stop sign ordinance. We go to second passage and we open it up to public comment, and someone from the public has a question. Who will be here to answer that question? We will, we will then have to submit the questions and ask that person, can you come back next week? We may have an answer for you. And that's the other thing, too. We're not asking for, Mr., Steve Kudo has, he has a lot under his umbrella, we understand that. But say you have a stop sign, maybe there's someone in his department that can come and answer those questions. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, Mr. Kudo. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I don't know any other, I don't, I don't know any other way to, to fix some of the issues and some of these ordinances without sometimes asking for the, those department heads. We don't have every department head here as previous councils. In my opinion, we don't need every department head. This is the second time I've seen a chief of police at our council meetings, you know? And it was good to hear from the chief of police that, you know, they, that resolution, to tighten up that resolution, it was, I was glad to hear from him, and I saw the union president, president here also. I know he's not a department head, but that's reassuring, so. But, you know, I know it's, it's the same argument, it's just, I don't understand what the problem is, you know? I just, I just don't get it.
No, thank you.
Okay. So you're, you're requesting at this point in time for the city solicitor to look into various amendments and all? Okay.
And the charter reconvening.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Constituent concerns regarding public traffic safety, including sidewalk project and tree removals. Councilman Souza.
So as I mentioned in the last council meeting, and I did have a follow-up with the mayor's office in regards to this. So Twatton Avenue, as we know, is a very busy road, state road. We have Six Corners, which is a one-way street, and there are subsequent roads, streets in that neighborhood that are also one-way. It has been increasingly dangerous for pedestrians in that area because of access to crossing streets. So we don't have sidewalk, crossing walks in certain areas around Six Corners or John Street. I did have, just today, actually, two young girls that were crossing to the dance studio, and they almost got hit by a vehicle because one vehicle stopped, but the second lane didn't see the vehicle. And the way Twatton Avenue kind of bends coming towards Six Corner, it's a blind spot. So to no fault of their own, we don't have a crosswalk there. They can't see the people crossing. And then in the evening, when dusk comes, the area is not well lit, though Six Corners does have some LED lights because the state placed about four in that general area. It doesn't meet where people are crossing, only in that island section. So that has been an ongoing issue. I did last year, 2017, have a meeting with the city manager at the time and DOT in discussions of how can we make this safer for the community? How can we improve that downtown area in the community to assist businesses? Because that has also become a dead zone for the businesses in that area because people just drive right by. There's no way to come loop around. People get confused with going to Broadway. So DOT had, was interested in potentially looking into maybe doing a two-way roundabout. So I was glad to mention that to the mayor's office, and they are going to be continuing conversations with DOT to come up with. And I believe the planning department has also come on board to maybe redesign something that has to do with a better access for safety and for vehicles and pedestrians to coexist with in a safe way. The children walking from the high school also come down that road. Again, no side, there's no crosswalks for them to cross over. John Street, which is the next one-way, just before the, the Six Corners, is also another problematic area. The shop turn coming around, around that bend, there's no traffic speed signs, which we should know what the traffic speed is coming down that road, but there's, for maybe those who don't live in the community, they don't know how deep that turn is. So I had asked that signage be placed there for alerting people that that turn is pretty sharp, and if they're not going at a reduced speed, they are going to hop that island, which people have hopped that island. And most recently, two weeks ago, Mrs. DiMediaris had somebody crash right into her brick wall that is in front of her home. So about five feet of her brick wall is caved into her front yard. And the person didn't stay, they kind of, they hit it and then left. And the police have been called out to that area for multiple accidents within the last few years. And just this year alone, I believe there are almost up to seven incidences in that one-way area. People come up the wrong way. Even at Six Corners, I've watched an ambulance come the wrong way trying to get onto Twatton Avenue, which is dangerous, obvious for many reasons. I myself have stopped people coming down the wrong way and had them turn around right in the middle of the road to go back in the correct direction. So multiple reasons why I think we need to rally behind maybe our state legislators, DOT, to, to really change that Six Corners and moving forward up to Dell's Lemonade, which is also that one-way, and turn that all into two ways roundabout. It's going to bring more business to that area, it's going to bring energy, revitalize that center of the city, and it's going to be safer. Safer for people traveling, safer for pedestrians walking. And in addition to that, I think we can make it, you know, there are a lot of funds, the Tiger grant is available. We've been asking our congressional delegation to try to bring some of that money back to East Providence to assist us with funding because that obviously is going to be a really large financial undertake to reconvene that whole area. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention and to kind of get more support from anybody who could help, including the mayor's office, in pushing that forward because it's really important for those residents that live there and their safety. We have a high, an elderly high rise in a lot of those people, as you know. Federica, who's come before us multiple times, they walk that area, so it becomes very dangerous for them. And then the second portion of my section is regarding sidewalks and tree removals. So it was brought to my attention by a few constituents recently, much like the paving of the road project that we have going on, so are the sidewalks, which are wonderful. And I know the city is really happy about getting new sidewalks. Dead trees are being removed that have been uprooting our sidewalks and going into people's drainage, causing some plumbing issues. I was wondering if the, I would like, I'm requesting, if the mayor's office could post on the city's website, much like the street paving schedule, the sidewalk schedule. I think it is incumbent that the residents know when somebody's going to be working in front of their, their home on the sidewalk. It does take up a lot of room, it takes up space, it takes, it's, it's important. And then trees. So I had a couple of residents on Green Street who witnessed the city cut down multiple healthy-looking trees to place a sidewalk. And so we've known as a tree city here in East Providence 23 years. We're vested in the environment and trees, and we take that very seriously. I know I do because I've hosted multiple. I know I do because I've hosted multiple Arbor Day celebrations. So, if we're taking down trees, why are we taking down trees? I know that the harbor, and Mark, you can come up certainly, I know the harbor, we have an arborist and I believe we still have an arborist. I don't know if that got cut in the DPW's budget, but if they're doing something, if the tree's not good or unhealthy, then that's a fine reason to take it down, but then we should be replacing the tree with the appropriate trees. Many of the trees planted throughout the city sidewalks were not the appropriate species of trees to be planting because of their roots and how much damage they do. So, interesting to know. And once the person did complain to the city about it, they stopped cutting down the tree. They didn't take down the next tree that they were about to do for whatever reason that was undisclosed. But certainly you have something to add, Mark?
Yeah. The, the two that you had brought up before on, on Williams Ave.
Yep.
So, that was, one was on May 13th, the other was on May 14th. So, they, those were healthy trees. They were taken, I talked to Rob Walker and he gave me the whole list of trees that we've taken down this year. It's about 53 so far. But, most of them are dead or dying off. Those two particular ones, one had a, an issue where the root was going through the sewer line. And then the other one, it was, the root was going underneath, was popping up the sidewalk. But, so that one, that particular one was more of a judgment call. Whether or not, it was starting to pose a potential tripping hazard. So, they made the judgment call to take the tree out instead. But, I mean, that's something going forward that we could come up with more of a uniform policy on if you want to go in that direction.
Sure. And I, and I trust the discretion of our superintendent in the DPW to make those right choices. Do we, do you know if we have an arborist still?
We have a tree ward, warden.
Okay. So, if we've taken down 53 this year, is that correct?
Yeah.
Are we replanting trees? Because to meet the city of trees certificate nationally, we have to have so many trees.
I'm not 100% sure. I'll, I can look into it. I think the 53, I apologize, it's not necessarily that we've removed the entire tree. A lot of it has just been trimming, taking down sections. I mean, if, if the tree itself is dead, then we'll take it down. But if like, it's, one instance on Orchard Street, right across the way, it was a tree branch that had, part of it had collapsed onto a resident's property. And the resident was elderly, they couldn't move it themselves, so DPW went out and took care of it. So, that's one of the 53.
Limb removal.
Yeah. So, that's one of the 53, but it's, the tree itself is still, is still there, so.
Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate that information. And then could we post what the sidewalk project is for the remaining of the year? For the residents of the city?
Yeah, we have so far, and again, I apologize that this is so last minute, but...
That's okay.
Yeah, we're about halfway done with the sidewalk repair this year. But, yeah, we can definitely post the remainder and then any additional projects that pop up.
So, the sidewalk repairs, a lot of that is based on constituent requests.
Yeah.
So, if you go on the city portal, on the city website, we have the resident request portal where you can go into various departments and ask for requests for things to be fixed like tree limb removals, if they're impeding, you know, wire lines or potholes or broken lights or fencing, anything in the community to bring awareness to the city that there's something that needs to be addressed, which I think is a great, a great program because you can only have eyes and ears in so many places at, at once. So, the involvement of the community helps tremendously in that. And I want to thank the DPW for doing a great job all summer long in taking care of, of our city. Okay. Thank you.
And Mark, can I bring up one note maybe for you to take back? And I'm not going to ask any questions, I promise. So, you know, a constituent called me about a week ago, slid a few streets over from me. She said, "Look, you know, I walk to St. Martha's Church every day." She said, not every day, but, you know, she does in the morning because of morning mass a lot. She said, "You know, I've fallen on these sidewalks. You know, the speeding up and down Pawtucket Avenue is, is crazy and I, you know, I've lived there for 15 years. I can say that it's crazy. That stretch between Cumberland Farms and Warren Avenue is like a grand prix with people switching lanes. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it, but there's a light, you know, a pedestrian light. You hit the button across the street to go to St. Martha's right in front of, people just blow through it all the time, red light. And there's a bus stop there, et cetera, et cetera." So, I think, you know, to your point, Councilwoman Souza, you know, I think there's probably, and I'm well-familiar with that area that you're talking about, right? But I, I mean, I think there's probably something comprehensive that we need to think about because that stretch of sidewalks on Pawtucket Avenue, that hasn't been touched since I've lived there. I mean, there's, it doesn't even look like...
I'm pretty sure a lot of it hasn't been touched since the New Deal.
Yeah, right. I mean, that, that stuff that works public administration, medallions are still in the sidewalk, right? So, and I don't know if it's a state issue, it's a city issue, but it's definitely something we live with every day. So, I think starting with, you know, that schedule, having that available, I think that piece of information that you raised, Councilwoman Souza, about the resident request portal, I didn't even know anything about that. So, knowing about that, I think, you know, I can pass that on to my constituents and certainly point out things myself. So, I think starting with information, that'd be great because, I mean, I think when it comes time for us to make budget decisions, it's going to be a hard sell for me to, you know, buy off on other things when I know that, you know, the sidewalk looks like, you know, Baghdad on Pawtucket Avenue. So, you know, maybe there's something that, you know, we can, we can do to kind of think through these issues comprehensively and, and take it on as a city.
Yeah. And I know, Councilwoman, you use Q Alert a lot.
A lot, yeah.
And that makes my job, that makes my job a lot easier. So, thank you for that.
Sure.
And I mean, I wasn't aware that that wasn't, that the rest of the council didn't know about that, but we can definitely make sure that everybody, if you want, can access Q Alert, can enter requests. I mean, anyone can do it, but that way, that'll go directly, you know, you spot a pothole. If you want, you can still contact me and I'll, you know, make sure it gets to the right person to take care of it. But if you want to just put in Q Alert, it'll go straight to the crew that's out there, goes right to their iPad when they're on the job and they go right up there, fill the pothole. And that's usually how we find out about it anyways, just people reporting it, so.
Want to come take a walk in a couple of days? You know, we'll walk up the road.
So, I know the previous council, the problem we were having last term with Pawtucket Ave is because it's state-owned. So, the city, I think more so DPW budget was, though they want to fix it, there's so many other streets and sidewalks and they felt like we really should be getting it from the state and that here lies the issue with the state. But maybe since the state now has a surplus in their budget, they can allot, allocate some money to fix the sidewalk on Pawtucket Avenue. One of the other things I did want to mention, I did bring it to the attention in our meeting with the mayor's office, is we, I did, we did have a resolution with signage as a, for making pedestrian signage more bright and visible for people, especially in the, in the dark, you know, at night, especially in the winter months where it's darker sooner, so it's longer. People may not be seeing, especially if you're more out of town, may not notice stop signs. Cars might be parked too close to the corner and people don't, when they're coming up to the corner, don't recognize there's a sign there. Suggestions that I have mentioned in the past, recently, and will continue to mention is we should be looking at putting reflectors maybe on the post going down the stop sign so as people approach a stop sign, you'll see a reflector letting you know that there's a stop sign there. Or there are stop signs and yield signs and pedestrian signs that flash, which don't have to be in every street corner, but high pedestrian areas, high traffic areas that are more susceptible to accidents. I know the police department could probably run statistics on where the most pedestrian or car accidents take place and then we can identify those at high-risk areas and address them. My concern is just, again, we're getting it to the summer months, more people are out, walking around, enjoying the weather. I don't want them to be at risk because we haven't done our due diligence in keeping them safe when we have the resources to do so.
But also in your, in your travels, if you see a faded sign, for an example, and I know at one point in time, there's a sign over by where you live, the stop sign. I don't know if that was replaced or not, but I had made a recommendation to switch that out because of yellow, everything was just so faded on it. But that's one of the other things, if you see faded signs, maybe perhaps of switching them out to a newer sign, better reflection on those as well. But I just want to go back to what you were talking about earlier, real quick, about Tawton Avenue primarily being, as far as I'm concerned, the gateway to the city. I mean, that's, that's our gateway right there, no matter which way you come in from the city, whether it's from the north or the south or the east or the west. That's our gateway to the city. And we're starting to see some revitalization there with the former Prince Source Building, Ivory Place coming to fruition. I think there was a comprehensive plan for, at one point in time with the planning department, to upgrade and enhance Tawton Avenue. But to me, I mean, that would be like a number-one priority, just dressing that up, getting some businesses in there, getting some cafes, some restaurants. And I would like to see some life there in, in the evening, you know?
Yeah.
Whether it's after work, if somebody's in Providence and they want to come to East Providence, or, you know, wherever they may be, just some type of activity going on there. I think it'll be really nice and that's something that hopefully down the road before we end, that we're starting to see something come alive over here.
I think annually, the mayor, the governor has a grant that people can, cities and towns can apply for, because I recall another municipality had applied for and they redid their whole downtown area.
That's true.
Which came out really nice. So, they have new lightings, everything's bright, businesses are thriving there.
People walking up and down the street.
It's really nice to see people walking around and we have the potential for that. We have the residents who want to do that. We have businesses that want to, to thrive and will do anything to help. It's just a matter of getting everybody on board and kind of pushing through to get it done. So, I'm hoping that the mayor's office, I know, I think that's a priority and hope that we can work together to make that come to fruition.
All right.
Thank you.
If I would like to add, just one, one observation. As far as I, I don't want to give the police department more work, but as far as like the faded signs, for example, those, you know, a faded stop sign can be a, a public safety issue, especially at night when it's not reflecting anymore.
Sure.
In addition to the public, you know, calling that in, I know all the municipalities do it, as far as police departments. Who better knows that area than the patrol person that works that area? They know every nook and cranny of the beat that they work, you know? So, me is, maybe you could look into perhaps a reporting system where that patrol person can forward that, that information, you know, stop sign faded, corner of Willet and Woodbine or whatever, and that gets then forwarded to DPW if that, if that would help. And I would also recommend something like that, if not already in place for potholes. I don't know what the procedure is right now, other than the public calling them in. And I'm going, and I'm mentioning this because of the one on Newport Avenue. We could have built a mini mall with the, you know, claims on that one, but if they do report those, you know...
So, that would be that request portal? Anybody can go online? So, a police officer could do it?
It does hap, it does happen, yeah.
Yeah. They could, anybody could do it. And that's what we would encourage people. Instead of calling and trying to get somebody to write it down and then follow up, I like accountability and I like a track of things that happen, documentation, being in the medical field, documentation matters. So, that's why I like to use that resource. I go online, I find my department that I need. It asks you what's your question? You can free-type what your issue is. You can even upload a picture if you're doing it from your mobile phone. So, I have done that at times, taken a picture of what it is that I'm requesting be looked at and forward it and they get right to, and you get a confirmation. So, they will say, "We've received your email." They will forward and say, "We have completed the task."
Yeah. They can actually track it too, like, you know, 85% complete. And you can do it for more, it doesn't just have to be like DPW stuff.
Right.
Like, for instance, yeah, or if, you know, you or a resident has speeding concerns or something, I mean, I'm not trying to pass the buck. I do enjoy talking to you guys on the phone and getting your emails and everything, but...
Oh, yeah. I can tell. That's not what you told me the other day. I'm kidding.
It is a good resource and I do, you know, I will constantly, and I'll put it up on my, my Facebook again for those who need a quick link to, to get it, because sometimes navigating through the syst, the system of the website on the city can be difficult, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move right along to letter D, chapter eight, article five, six. You may.
Solicitors' questions, chapter eight, article six, Solicitors' Questions Regarding Applicability and Enforcement. Councilman Cahoon.
Let's try to do this quickly and this follows up on a point that Mr. Burdo raised a couple of months back, it was a Five March meeting about solicitors. And I'm responding to a couple of constituents' issues with, you know, rather aggressive solicitors coming after dark, you know, banging on doors loudly, et cetera, et cetera. So, I looked into the ordinance, you know, specifically under section 1 S, 8-116, sorry, I'm giving some feedback there. And I asked a few questions and I sent a few questions to Mike and kind of nicely drew the, the box around it. Essentially, what, what I was looking to find out was the ordinance says that nothing in, in the ordinance about solicitors shall apply to nonprofit, political, civic, religious or charitable organizations. So, I asked, does that mean that they're exempt from having to get licenses, show licenses to police? And he basically indicated that yes, you know, they, they essentially are. It's a, it's a, it's an amendment, you know, first amendment issue that probably is something sticky that I don't want to get into. But with regard to folks that are coming, you know, door-to-door and selling things, right? I, I think that I have some concerns about, well, A, is the current ordinance that we have appropriate to ensure that those folks are sort of controlled, are doing it at appropriate times? And is the enforcement taking place to make sure that, you know, people that are violating the law, people that are, you know, maybe coming door-to-door unlicensed or could potentially be fraudulent, you know, is there sufficient ordinance enforcement in place to make sure that, you know, our residents are safe and not bothered by nuisances? So, to that end, I asked kind of a question jointly to Chief Nevis and to Sam. There is something in the, in the ordinance that says, you know, the police are supposed to report on the number of, of times that essentially that they, you know, they, they find somebody in violation and that's supposed to be maintained in the clerk's office. So, I wanted to find out in the past, has that been done? Is there data with regard to people? And then, you know, the, the follow-up question is, what do we have in terms of, you know, with the solicitors that are out and about, are they actually coming here and getting registered or getting licenses or whatever they have to do? Are they doing that stuff? So...
So, to answer that question, and Chief Nevis, he was, he was going to speak to that, but him and I had talked earlier. I, as of right now, just for the past few months since I've been the city clerk, I haven't received anything from, from the police department as of yet, haven't received anything. But I will say that a lot of the times, I do have people call my office and they're very upset and I have them collect as much information as they can, you know, if they leave, you know, any kind of literature or anything like that. And I take it upon myself to call them, to call the business up and, because I feel that anybody who feels that they're threatened or harassed or anything, that we, we should address that. And, you know, a city clerk dealing with business licenses and things like that should be able to speak to that and let people know. So, as of right now, that is the only thing that we're doing. It's a little rogue, I guess, on my behalf, but it's just a matter of making sure that the businesses know and they're held accountable. And, yeah, so that's what we have. So, to answer your question, no, there isn't anything as of yet, but Chief Nevis and I are definitely going to work on that. And in the meantime... are definitely going to work on that, and in the meantime, just as much information as people can give, and then I do call the Police Department, and I let them know, because a lot of the times, like you were saying, they, it shakes people up a little bit, and so.
Yeah, and, you know, the police have better things to do than to chase around people that might be potentially legit, right, because they're knocking on doors. But if there's something we can do from an ordinance perspective to make enforcement easier, whether it's, you know, having, you know, people that wear laminates or something that's visible, I don't know, you know, I'm really willing to entertain anything that might be, but, you know, it's really not appropriate for anybody to ever be banging on somebody's door after dark, that's what the ordinance says. And I think that there's probably a way to get to stemming that without sending the police into the, you know, the streets to track down all the solicitors.
Well, and that's the other thing, too, if I can just expand on that a little bit more, if anybody has door-to-door salespeople that do come and solicit, they should have some kind of piece of paper, and if they don't have that, then that's definitely something to, I need to report. I know, Mike, you were going to say something about solicitors, were you going to expand on that? No, okay, Mike was not going to say anything, so, but yeah.
No, he could be a bunch of homework.
But they should have something that says it, that they're authorized, so, and you can ask to see that, and if you don't, if they don't have that, then, you know, that's something to definitely report, but that's definitely the people at home letting us know by either calling the clerk's office or the police station, but really, the clerk's office, you can start there. We're always having to help.
Thank you. I will follow up with the clerk.
I'm glad, glad you clarified this, when you said solicitors were banging on the doors at night loudly, I was going to say, Mike, what are you doing? But it's another solicitor, not.
Different type.
Different type of solicitor, thank you.
It's the Dylan Conley solicitor.
If I may add to that, first, I want to thank you for looking at that, Councilman Cahoon, you know, public safety is one of my top priorities also, but I, we've had the same issue in the community that I work, and I don't know if I should mention that, but you know where I work. Some of these solicitors are from other state, they are contracted, they come in for a week or so, and they're put up in, you know, motels, and they go door-to-door. And one of the things that we did, we did give them a temporary permit for that day, or for the week timeframe that they signed up, so, exactly so we don't have to go around, police have better things to do than go around chasing people. When we do come across them, they've already been vetted. In fact, we do a quick little background check, just to make sure that, you know, they're not selling windows around the school, and they're, you know, there's other, like, child-related charges. So that may be something that we could look into, and it's easy enough to have it laminated, or even if they would just check into the Police Department and gave their name to the dispatcher, and they kept a list, instead of going through the trouble of the, you know, permit and laminating and all that stuff, I think that also would help the situation with properly vetting them.
If I'm not mistaken, is that covered in the ordinance?
What is what?
What the councilman had just talked about, because if I'm not, that ordinance that's out there right now with respect to solicitors was very explicit on what they can and cannot do. I think what they're doing essentially is, they're just, they're just going out there and soliciting door-to-door, they're not stopping at City Hall, they're not checking in with, you know, the city or the police or anyone, they're just, they're out there.
Non-licensed, yeah.
They're just going out there, you know?
Nobody's coming for a permit.
Yeah, by all means, no.
To my recollection, to answer your question, Mr. Brito, there is something, there is a provision in the ordinance that says, upon challenge, they're supposed to produce, you know, identification, right?
I think I'd sponsor that.
But the thing that, you know, kind of got me is, you know, the constituent who called me said, you know, if somebody's banging on my door after dark, I don't even want to answer the door, let alone challenge them for their identification, right? And she shouldn't have to feel like that.
And that was the point I made last time, just call the police.
Yeah.
Just call the police at that point.
Can't see that little rain, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Bradley Hospital Hasbro Children's Hospital Quilt, Council President Brito.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to step up to the podium while you all, because I'm going to reference this quote while I'm talking to you all. So my sister works with the Hasbro Hospital, the PASHO program, and she deals with a lot of mental health issues, primarily adolescents, their kids, teenagers, and even younger. So when this was brought to my attention, the work that she was doing some time ago, when she and I had talked about this, I think even as far as last year, the quote project eventually came to fruition. And what this quote project is, and I'm hoping that while I'm spending this time up here talking about the quote project, that I can roll and segment right into a mental health resolution that we have here, kill, pardon the French, but kill two birds with one stone. So the quote was a collaboration between Hasbro Children's Hospital PASHO program and the Bradley Hospital Arts Therapy Program. The quote was a creative artistic means to help kids express themselves and help battle with the stigma associated with mental health. The quote highlights patients' diagnosis, pain, emotional struggles, family and school issues through pictures and words. The quote gives an expression and understanding of children and their teens, whose voices and feelings often go unheard. So when we had this discussion, I thought, wow, this would be a great opportunity that we could display this quote here at City Hall for a number of days, perhaps even weeks, that people could come in and take a look at it. Unfortunately, we can't put it in the lobby because it's too big, it'll be hanging, a portion of it will be on the floor, and that's the last thing we want to do at this point in time with this quote. The state had recognized this, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and did, with, my sister worked with Representative Kazarian on this as well, of having awareness, mental health awareness month for the month of May at the State House, and there was a proclamation issued at that point in time at the State House regarding the work that these kids have done. And if you get the opportunity at some point in time, whether it's after the meeting, tomorrow or next week, whatever it may be, just take, come up, take a look at the quote, and as I read in this passage, it just, for some of the kids, it just talks about at that point in time where they were emotionally, and how they felt, and you can see where their emotions are, and how they express themselves, where some are saying it's a great day, others are the same, just the opposite. So I thought it was important to have this displayed at City Hall, to make month a, or make it Mental Health Awareness Month, so people can actually come up and physically see it, you could touch it as well, but bring awareness to those who have the stigma of mental health. And if I may, may I go right into the resolution declaring mental health? So State of Rhode Island Province Plantation, City of East Providence, resolution, resolution declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of East Providence. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month was started in the United States in 1949 by the Mental Health American, America Organization, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is effective way to reduce the burden of mental illness, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental illness can recover and lead a full, productive life. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month strives to, strives to raise awareness and educate the public, and to reduce the negative attitude and misconceptions that surround mental illness, and whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental illness, and has the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved at the City Council of the City of East Providence, hereby authorize the Mayor of the City of East Providence to proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, President Brito, for bringing this to the floor. I think it's a wonderful thing for the city to acknowledge, and the state, obviously. The children over there at Bradley are amazing group of kids, they are surrounded by an amazing group of medical staff, mental health workers, social workers, and I know in the community of Rhode Island, East Providence, we also have a lot of agencies that assist with mental illness and substance abuse that is also a correlation with mental illness. So I thank you for bringing this to the attention, and I think it's wonderful to be acknowledging them, and that we have their quilt here hanging proudly in our City Hall. That being said, I'd like to move passage on the resolution.
So we have a motion on the floor to move passage on the resolution by Councilwoman Souza, would someone like to second that motion?
A second.
We have a second motion from Councilman Cahoon. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you all. Next item, please.
The Greater Rumford Bake Off Update, Councilman Brito.
Last Sunday, Mother's Day, May 12th, as I had talked about and discussed, several meetings prior to the last meeting, that there was a bake-off over at Hunts Mills. It turned out to be, as I've indicated, we had 47 contestants in the adult division, 13 in the junior division, they were first, second, and third place prizes for both divisions. I, myself, and the mayor just so happened to be judges, where there were six judges, there was three groups of judges, six in each group. The group that I was associated with, we had the first 15 pieces of desserts to try and taste. Unfortunately, I had pitches that I submitted, for some apparent reasons, not, it's not going to be displayed, but I submitted pitches to be displayed on the monitor this evening, so all of yous will get a general idea of what these pieces look like, and I'm telling you, the presentation on some of these cakes that people had there was just unbelievable. It turned out to be a very exciting afternoon, although it rained, not only did it rain, but it poured. They had the opening of the educational, educational house there as well, which is something to see, it's not that big, it's a nice size, though, but for those of you who have events now, at Hunts Mills, they have a building there, with heat and air conditioning, and believe it or not, they also have a restroom in there as well. But it was a wonderful day, despite the weather, it was Mother's Day, and the first-place prize for the adult division was a crepesicle, the cream, orange creamsicle cake, actually. And again, I'll make sure that we have it up for the next meeting, just to give you a general idea. They had a nice, the Preservation Society did a great and wonderful thing with this bake-off. For the junior division, first place was the magnificent muffin, mentally. So we had, I had, or the group that I was affiliated with, had the pleasure of tasting the first 15. So right out the block, I come out strong, and I take a full piece of cake, I have a full chocolate chip cookie, a gluten-free chocolate chip cookie, and by the time I got to item number five, I was full. Literally was full, and I had 10 more to taste. So then I wizen up, and I just got smaller pieces, but after that, I threw in the towels, I said, no mas, I'm done, I can't eat anymore. Well, we reconvened, the groups reconvened, and we had a chef, a professor chef from Brown Uni, excuse me, from Johnson Wales, I think, a couple of them. We had a woman, a student who went to Brown, Johnson and Wales, who's a bakery chef, and now owns a bakery in Lincoln, and she was one of the judges as well. And let me just tell you, by the time it came for the second time, so we picked the top three winners for each division, and then we had to go out and test more or try more, and by that time, it was just, we were all just full at that point in time, we just had enough. But for the turnout for our Mother's Day, number one, the day that we had it, it was a very rainy day, we had, they had over, well over 100 people that attended this event, not only contestants, but others as well. And I just want to thank all those who, all those contestants who entered into this judgment, because it was one of a kind, and I'm hoping that they continue with this for the next previous years going forward. And I don't want to mention any one particular name, because once you start thanking one person, then there's another person, and another person, and I don't want to exclude anyone. However, I will say, I just want to thank everybody for putting this together, and all the contestants that went out and displayed their cake, pastry, cookies, Danish, whatever it may be. So thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is, under ordinances, it's item B, second passage in public hearing, an ordinance and amendment of chapter 13 of the Revised Ordnances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Public Places for Vote.
This is the library ordinance.
This is the library ordinance. Sponsored by Councilman Brito.
Okay, so the library ordinance, for those who weren't aware last year, essentially, we're redelegating the duties to the Board of Trustees of the library. So although you may see for this ordinance that there's, the prices are all checked off or crossed out, doesn't necessarily mean that the Board of Trustees is eliminating these charges for rental fees or whatever it may be. What it says is that we're eliminating the City Council and taking the, all the information now going forward out of the hands of the City Council and passing it on to the Board of Trustees at the library. It passed unanimously the last meeting. Again, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're eliminating, there were some questions or concern about that, rightfully so, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're eliminating or removing any of these fees or charges. What it says is that those charges are going to remain as is, those fees, and however, it's going to be in the hands of the library trustee. Would anyone be interested in for a second passage moving this?
Public hearing.
Oh, a public hearing, oh, okay. Excuse me. Anyone from the public have any questions or concern that they would like to address regarding this ordinance, please step up to the podium. I'm going to repeat myself one other time before I close public hearing, and the council will vote on this as for final passage. So is anyone interested in speaking for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium and speak your piece, otherwise I'll close this for public comment, and we'll move on for a vote. At this time, I'm requesting to close, close this for public comment, and at the pleasure of the council, anyone have any discussion at this point in time, please express your concerns or otherwise. If not, I move for someone to make a motion to either approve or disapprove.
Mr. President, move to approve the ordinance as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon to approve the amendment.
Mr. President, a second.
And we have a second by Councilman Roderick. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you all. Next item, please.
Continued business sewer abatement ordinance and rate discussion, Councilman Morato.
So before I get into sewer ordinance, I just want to reiterate my questions, as I have mentioned a couple of council meetings already, had a few different council meetings. Before we have a sewer rate, water rate discussion, I still feel that those, the questions that I asked in the past should still be answered before we do proceed with, you know, public workshops and whatnot. And some of the questions that I have asked, it's the, what would it cost for the city to run our own sewer plant? What would it cost for Narragansett Bay to run our plant? What would it cost for, or I understand that they, we are going to go into negotiations with SUEZ in the near future, and also one of the questions that were posed, that were on the council meetings, can the rate that Barrington pays, can that be negotiated to offset, help offset some of the costs of the deficits that we have running that sewer plant? So I still want to, I just want to reiterate that, and I still believe that those questions should be answered. should be answered prior to having those sewer rate discussions. And in respect to the sewer ordinance, I have a couple of printouts, and the reason why I would like to work on this ordinance and help improve it a little bit. For example, we pay out quite a bit of money on sewer abatements. For example, two thousand seventeen, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Two thousand and sixteen, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Two thousand and eighteen, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the amount of research I was, I've been able to do, what I have discovered is that a lot of the other municipalities, such as Warwick and Patucket, Barrington, I try, I try to look at the municipal, municipalities that are comparable in size to East Providence. But what I found is that they have in their ordinances what's called owner responsibility. For example, Warwick does not pay for, give abatements for leaky toilets, broken water hoses. In fact, they don't even do filling of pools. No more adjustment for filling of a swimming pool. And Warwick has twenty-two thousand customers. A lot of their, they still have customers who have cesspools and septic, but twenty-two thousand utilize the sewer system, which is comparable, well, it's half of what we have, I believe, but they paid out two thousand and eighteen, twelve thousand dollars. So that's pretty significant in the difference. So when I looked at this ordinance, and it's quite a big ordinance, chapter seventeen, there's over forty-five pages in it, I wanted, I just wanted to focus on a couple of sections, and I just want, I would like the council feedback, and we don't have to resolve or have the entire discussion tonight, we can do it in little bits and pieces if the council desires to do that. But if we look at section, as we mentioned, actually, Mrs. Solicitor, section seventeen dash one eight three, which is the thirty dollars one time. Seventeen dash one eight three, section seven, that's the thirty dollars one time fee, you know, credit, actually. Correct. So we're giving that out as a credit, from my understanding, a one-time credit, once a year. But in addition to that, we're also calculating where a pool is filled later on in this ordinance. You have to have a pool that's eight thousand gallons or more, which is eighteen feet, eighteen-foot round pool or larger. It's, you know, it's my opinion, and I like the feedback of the council as to what should we do with this, should we look into changing this, should we look into keeping it the same? That's just one area that I picked out in this ordinance. The other area that I picked out, it's the leaky toilets, for example, the homeowner responsibility. Should we add a language to this ordinance that puts that responsibility on the homeowner? You know, if I forget to turn off the faucet outside and the garden hose bursts and you have water, you know, leaking overnight, why is that the city's responsibility? Just simple common sense things like that. That's, that's one of the areas I would like to look at and possibly change. And one of the biggest areas that I've been trying to get answers on, it's the rate, the thirty-three percent rate that's in the ordinance, and that section's under, one second. Seventeen dash one eight three, paragraph one, or number one. And I tried to do, this is why I tried to do the research, most of the research, with other communities, do they use a percentage or not? And if so, what is that percentage? And I had, Madam Clerk had do a little poll through the clerk database, and if you can just elaborate as to what.
We're still researching a little bit more, but so far, there's been four municipalities that have reported back that they don't have anything like that as a, as an ordinance, so, for the thirty-three percent.
So through some of the questioning emails through the mayor's office to Steve Kudo, from what I ga, from what I gather, the higher the percentage, the less payouts that the city, the city will pay out. And that's the calculation, that's how he calculates. I don't know much about how that formula works, other than knowing that the percentage, if it goes up, it's a benefit to the city, if it goes down, it's a benefit to the person asking for an abatement. These are some of the areas that I would like to touch on, would like to focus on. But more importantly, the homeowner responsibility, that's one of the areas I think it's very important. And also, perhaps looking at putting a cap on some of these claims, as we do with potholes, for example, if that's possible, if that's legal. I guess you're going to have a lot of work this upcoming week. I'd just like some feedback.
Oh, Councilman, I've always said that the, the water here, and it's not so much the water, it's more the sewer than it is the actual water, but, you know, the sewer rates are based on water consumption, the way I look at it. And water in the city of East Providence is like, you know, going back to the gold rush. I mean, water is expensive here. And you just have to be very careful and, you know, be aware of, there was a point in time where the toilet would run in my house, and I would allow it to run for days and perhaps sometimes weeks. Then I had a leak in faucet, and again, same exact thing, I would allow it to run for days and other times, sometimes weeks before it got fixed. But I tell you right now, when I hear that toilet consistently running, or that faucet dripping right now, I'm making a beeline to one of the nearest hardware stores. In this case now, it's Lowe's or Home Depot, but in the past, it was either Standard or Benny's. And I would run there and make those quick repairs. And I would do that because I know at the end of the day how much it was going to cost. We just have to be more aware, when you hear that toilet running in your house consistently over and over again, you know there's an issue, there's a problem, try to get to it as soon as possible. When that faucet is dripping, I mean, even if you decide or determine whether it's the hot water or the cold water, you could turn that off because it costs a lot of money. And what people are doing is they're coming to the city and saying, oh, well, we have an ordinance on the books that allows me, so we're going to make it the city's burden. Well, you know, I mean, the city loses a lot of money each year, a lot of money, in excess of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, I say, anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars in some of these claims, just because people just didn't do their due diligence. And when they heard that toilet running or that, or saw that faucet dripping water, they just decided, well, I'm going to leave it, and at some point in time, I'll take care of it. Well, you need to take care of it because it's no longer going to be the city's responsibility going forward.
Mr. President, I want to agree with you and Councilman Morato, and one of the suggestions I have for preparing the public that I made in one of our Claims Committee meetings, I'd like to follow up at some point, is that everyone gets a water bill in the mail, at least most people, and we ought to have a letter included, so we're not paying for extra postage, we can also do this on the website. I know it's being rebuilt, and I don't know if it's totally up and running efficiently, but there are a lot of ways to contact the public, but generally, a letter in everyone's bill that nicely states, we're not going to be responsible as a city if you leave your garden hose running. There was at least an instance of a person going away, going to Florida or something for a two, three-month period, and said, oh, I came home and there was a faucet running in the cellar, you know, and water. Well, why is that the fault of other taxpayers? You know, so people need to be responsible for their own property, their own equipment, their, their own plumbing. Obviously, there are hardship cases, an elderly person, something happened beyond their control, we deal with that issue by issue. But in general, we should work on crafting a, a letter, I hate to use the term a warning letter, but at least a notice that explains this, and that way it would get out to most of the public that if you leave your garden hose running all winter while you're in Florida, and it bursts and water is all over the place, and you want an abatement, you know, you've been warned, you know, don't, don't leave your faucet running. If you're going away for the winter, disconnect your hose, that's what you should do, common sense, shut it off. So that's one thing I'd like to see us do, and as you say, Councilman Morato, we have to bring that up to a department head, so maybe at some point, when, when you get this crafted more as, as a public discussion, we'll put that request out to have the water superintendent here, DPW here, and answer these questions that we probably can't.
Actually, I think that's a good idea with a letter, maybe we can call it a, an educational type letter. And for example, how though, how can, how do you find out if your toilet's leaking? I went, I ran at this problem a month ago, and I thought one of my toilets were leaking. So it was just a matter of simple food coloring drops in the water tank itself, and just letting it sit. And if the bowl turned that color, then obviously you have a leak if you didn't touch it for an hour or two. Simple common sense tips, if you have a water line, a supply line that goes out to a garage, for example, and that garage is not heated, then you should know as a homeowner that you need to winterize that line, because when that line bursts, water is going to go, you know, anywhere other than the sewer, but that's, that should be a homeowner's responsibility. So I will, some of these points, I could get together with the Solicitor, maybe for the next council meeting, if not for the one after, just to have something that we discussed, and then we can have further discussions on it. So that's, if the council's up for that, and that's something I could work on.
And appears that that concludes this section, and we can move right on over to our new business, Ms., Madam Clerk.
Reports of other city officials. City Solicitor Michael J. Marcello, Claims Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council President, members of the city council, as you know, at six-thirty, the city council meeting has the Claims Committee met in executive session to discuss the following claims, the following action was taken. New claims, Ms. High Brata, in the amount of one forty-one, one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents for property damage as a result of a striking, a pothole was approved unanimously by the city council. New claim of Carolyn E. Oliver for vehicle damages as a result of striking a pothole or water, utility trench, the Public Works Director recommended approval. The total amount of claim asked for was seven hundred and one dollars and eighty cents. Council approved that in the amount, up to three hundred dollars. Sewer charge abatements, the following sewer charge abatements were approved in the following amounts. Mr. Christopher B. in the amount of sixty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents unanimously, Ms. Jean Gendron in the amount of two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents unanimously, Natalie Houlihan in the amount of one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents, approved unanimously. Mr. David River for a charge of one hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents for sewer abatement was not approved, was denied unanimously. And the last sewer charge abatements was Anid Thomas in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents, which was approved unanimously. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Solicitor.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. If we can move right on, move the unknown to the resolutions.
Okay, resolutions. Item A, resolution requesting that equitable state financing be procured with, for the operation of the East Providence Waterfront Commission, sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. President. I would put this forward after consultation with Chairman Fazioli of the Waterfront Commission and some members of that commission, and also some of our state delegation. I won't go into the whole discussion because we did that at the last meeting, we saw the presentation from Chairman Fazioli. I note that Mrs. Sherrill is here, is that how you pronounce it? Is it Sherrill? Okay. Is here tonight, and as through Mr. Fazioli has told me that she also, of course, strongly supports this. So I don't think I will obviously read the whole thing, the resolution just states the good things that the Waterfront Commission is doing for the city of East Providence and for the state of Rhode Island. And they get zero dollars from the city or the state, and what this resolution does is, it's basically just a, a letter from us, a resolution from the council and to the mayor's office after we adopt it, if we do, that just asks the state, not the city of East Providence, but for the state to sit down with the Waterfront Commission and come up with a, some funding for them. It doesn't tie them down to a dollar figure at all. I'll read just a couple of the excerpts. The resolution is entitled, Requesting That Equitable State Financing Be Procured For The Operation Of The East Providence Waterfront Commission. Whereas, the East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Commission was created by Rhode Island State Law, enacted two thousand and three, and the commission was created to oversee, plan, implement, and administer the development of the areas within the district of, the charter is established by the state of Rhode Island. The commission functions and conducts its business and activities in a manner which is approved by commerce within Rhode Island. The only money the commission gets is from the builders and the developers that have to pay a certain percentage and for permits. And so this is just a, describes all of that. I would end what I have to say by reading at the end where it says, Note that the commission does not receive any city or state funding for its operation. All monies are obtained through the acceptance of project fees and permits, et cetera. And this, there have been no tax credits of any kind, either requested or given, to any developer since the inception of the commission, which was a fallacy with some people, they thought we were giving the world away to let these developers come in, we've given them zero. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of East Providence respectfully requests that the Rhode Island General Assembly, the governor of Rhode Island, and the mayor of East Providence, or their authorized representatives, meet with the leadership of the commission, the Waterfront Commission, for the purpose of requesting appropriate state funding for the continued operation of the commission. And this goes on to say that the city clerk would send a copy of this to the governor, the president of the Rhode Island Senate, speaker of the House of Representatives, and the senate and representative delegation from the city of East Providence, and of course, to the mayor. Mr. Fazioli as chairman feels that this is a very important resolution, and I don't know, Mrs. Sherrill, if you would agree, or did I say anything that was incorrect?
No, that was a great summary. We do operate on a, on a deficit basis.
Could you push the button there, please? Thanks.
Our expenses do exceed our income at this point, so it's not a sustainable operation. We, I work hard, I'd say we work hard. I do work very, very hard, but the way that we can get this is with the resolution as requested by Senator Conley. So it's with his, his blessings that said this is the first way to start.
And I would just urge my colleagues that time is of the essence, the legislature will be out of session soon, so I'm hoping this is approved tonight, and we can get something drafted in a day or two and sent out to the appropriate offices as listed here.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I guess I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Okay, so we have a resolution on, excuse me, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution as submitted by Councilman Rodrick. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I second that motion, and just in addition, just add, you know, the clerk can just send it right over as soon as possible. it right over as soon as possible, as written, to expedite, as our vice chair mentioned.
Okay. So the motion is seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote. Madam Clark, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
I believe we're deferring item B.
We could table if we like, or you want to table this?
Push the table.
Motion, okay. So move, I would move to retable.
Second.
Okay. So, Madam Clark, may we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please. We skip. Let me see and jump right on over to D.
Absolutely. Item D, resolution in support of legislation to establish an Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund, also known as OSC, sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
So this resolution supports basically two simultaneous legislative streams, if you will. There's a bill in draft from the House, as well as from the Senate. They're essentially identical, and they both support establishing this fund at the state level for help with, you know, kind of maritime projects for, that are impacted by climate change. One thing that I like about Rhode Island legislation is, there's actually simple language at the end of every single bill. So this is, this is what this one says, is, "This act would establish the Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund, or OSC, which provides grants to fund projects that adapt infrastructure on public lands to address impacts of climate change, identifies eligible slash ineligible projects, allocation, dispersments, and financing of the fund. The act would take place on July 1, 2019." That is from the House bill. House bill, I'll give you the number. It's in the resolution, 5628, and there's a Senate bill currently looking to do the same thing. I could read this resolution if you like. We've got it here in our packets. I think it's part of what was made available to the public. Don't see any reason to do it, but like Councilman Rodrick did, I'll just highlight a couple of things. You know, whether folks want to believe it or not, I mean, the fact that, you know, sea level rise has been occurring fairly steadily over the last century or so, and will continue to do so, is kind of a matter of the public scientific record. According to the language of the bill, no indicates that sea level rise is projected to be approximately one foot in 2035, two feet in 2050, and nine feet by the year 2100. Nine feet is really cataclysmic, especially if you live in a place like Boston, which is under sea level. So, you know, with things like this, you know, everybody's kind of wrestling, trying to figure out the best way forward. The OSC fund per the two bills would be established, and it would also establish a commission that would decide, you know, how funds were allocated to the OSC fund, and how they were allocated from the fund to various projects. Projects might involve, you know, building up seawalls that are protecting communities from erosion, things like that, things that are reacting to, you know, sea level rise. Where the funding would come from, the funding could be a matter of private funding, it could be allocated by way of legislation, by way of the General Assembly. And the, both bills actually basically establish a tax of five cents a barrel for any petroleum that is delivered to, you know, a marine port within the state of Rhode Island. There's a nice symmetry in that, to me. I mean, there's an added cost to petroleum use, fossil fuel use, that we haven't addressed, really, in the history of using it, and that's, and what it does to, you know, our climate, and the cost that we have as communities for having to, you know, repair things like erosion, and things like cleanup, stuff like that. So really, that's kind of the bills in a nutshell, and the resolution here would support passage of those bills. I can't tell you what's going to happen to either of those bills. Currently, they're held up in committee as of May 2, but hopefully, our resolution will give them a kick, and maybe they'll make it.
Well, Councilman, would you like to form that in a?
I will. I will move to approve this resolution in support of legislation to establish an Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund, or OSC.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clark, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. E being the next item was bumped up earlier and discussed. Looks like we're at the home stretch.
Mr. President, I move adjournment.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn at this point in time by Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. And at this time, there's no reason to reconvene in executive session, so good night.